I'd like to call to order the March 12th, 2019, regular board meeting of the Richland II School Board of Trustees. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to recess public session and convene an executive session for the purpose of a discussion of student appeals, student admission requests to the district's adult education program, a diploma petition, and a contractual matter regarding charter school renewal. Legal advice regarding the bond resolution is no longer needed.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. It's been moved and properly seconded. If there's any discussion. Hearing none, we will call the question and cast our votes at this time. Have you got everybody else to make a... By a vote of seven to zero, we will convene into executive session. At this time, we will call to order the March 12th, 2019, regular business meeting of the Richland II School Board of Trustees. I apologize that we are a few minutes late starting tonight, but thank you for your patience. We have just returned from executive session, where we convened for the purpose of a discussion of student appeals, student admission requests to the district's adult education program, a diploma petition, and a contractual matter regarding charter school renewal. There was a legal advice regarding the bond resolution, but that was no longer needed. So that was not included in executive session. At this time, we will move on to item three, specifically 3.1 Inspirational Moment, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And the person who does the inspirational moment would just lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and that would be Ms. Radeka Patel, if you would come forward. Thank you, Ms. Patel. Ms. Patel is an engaged and parent of a Spring Valley high schooler. We appreciate your engagement in District II for a long time. She's also the pastor and prophetess of... Correct me. Miracles International Ministries and the owner of Miracles Hair Salon. But we appreciate you being here and being a committed member of our community and very passionate. So thank you for being here to share a word with us this evening. And when you finish, just ask everyone to stand and go into the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, first of all, for having me. And I just want to give honor honors due to everybody in their respective places. Thank you, Amelia, for that amazing... Just the privilege to just come and share a few words of inspiration. This is different for me. So I'm used to preaching. Keep it separate. But I want to come from a passage that I'm sure like 95% of the people in here are probably familiar with. It reads, "Love never gives up. Love cares more for others than for self. Love doesn't want what it doesn't have. Love doesn't strut. It doesn't have a swelled head. It doesn't force itself on others. It isn't always me first. It doesn't fly off the handle. It doesn't keep score of others' wrongdoings. Love doesn't rejoice when others are treated unjustly, but rather it rejoices in the truth. It takes pleasure in flowering the truth. Puts up with anything. Always looks for the best. Never looks back, but keeps going to the end." And I wanted to come from that passage because, like she said, I'm not going to speak from a place of just an organizational community leader or an entrepreneur, but just as a mom. I want to share a brief story with everybody. If y'all just indulge me for a few minutes. My son is a freshman at Spring Valley High School. He is academically... Just he loves academics. He loves the school district. But he was afforded an awesome opportunity in middle school to take a full academic scholarship at one of like the best private schools here in Columbia. And I came from this passage because I just wanted to inspire the leaders of Richland School District II, as well as parents and students, that the school district we are privileged to be a part of is such an awesome testament of love. He went to this school. My son is multiracial. I'm Indiana. His father's African-American. And it was a school that was not predominantly minority. But needless to say, the point was, he was only there for one day. And I disenrolled him and enrolled him back in Richland School District II just because of the level of hate and just the level of unjust that he experienced. And that was just a testament to... He knew what a leader looked like. He knew that a leader operated in love. A leader operated fairly. A leader operated just compassionate. And even when they were corrected or even when they were chastised, it was done in love. It was never done to humiliate. It was never done to tear down. And he's been in Richland School District II since he was in Child Development, Early Child Development Center. So I came today just with a message to just encourage everybody, even from the leaders to like the least of them, that we are a part of an amazing, amazing school district. Love is the foundation. And I believe that the reason he was able to identify with what was hate was because of the amount of love that he had received and had been imparted in him. And he knew that a loving atmosphere, it caused him to reach his highest standards. It caused him to perform his best. And it caused him to not just be a team player, but to advocate for others and to stand up for others because love was the foundation of every teacher, every administrator he's ever experienced, from Rice Creek Elementary to Blythewood Middle to Spring Valley High School. And I have the awesome privilege of knowing a few of the leaders here on the board, as well as administrators, counselors, teachers, principals in this district. And I just wanted to say that the passage that I read, that "Love never gives up and never cares more for others than for self", that is absolutely true. And I just wanted to come to say thank you. Thank you as a parent. Thank you as somebody who is heavily involved in the community. But just I'm a mom first. And it's good to know it takes a village to raise a child. And I'm a single mom. And so I'm just grateful for the amount of love that this school district reflects. And I'm grateful for leaders like Amelia that shows him, when she was there, I made a phone call, like I don't... You know, how can I rectify the situation? And it was just everything was done in love. And it was done in humility. And so I just wanted to come with that message today. I know that probably could have thought of a lot of more profound things to say, but you know, if we don't have love, we don't have anything. So yeah, that's my message, just love. Love each other. And thanks for the love that is shown to the students because it shows, it reflects in his academics. It reflects in his behavior. And a lot of people don't get love at home. So not saying that everybody is perfect. And not saying that, you know, teachers don't have their bad days, administrators don't have their bad days. But there's grace for that. I'm grateful that for every person that was... In just his... Like in his educational, just in his career so far, anybody that mishandled him or mistreated him or treated him unfairly or did not give him the opportunity because he's... He always is advocating. He's always... He's the bridge. We call him the bridge. And anybody that mishandled him, I'm grateful that because love is the standard, that they always came back and they try to make it right with him. And they try to hear him out and correct him. And if they tore him down, they build him back up. So I just wanted to come with the message today to say that love is greater than everything. So if we don't have love, we don't have anything. Amen? That's my message. So if y'all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. You said that you didn't have anything profound to say, but I think love is pretty profound. And we appreciate you sharing your testimony and your experience in the district. Moving on to item 4.1, approval of our current agenda. We could get a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the agenda for the March 12th, 2019 meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Shad. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question and cast our votes at this time. By a vote of... Is that accurate? Okay. Let the record show that it says six in one not present, but that's an error. It's actually seven to zero that the motion unanimously carries. Now moving on to item 5.1. Who wants to vote again? Okay. Item 5.1, special recognitions, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, we have Ms. Libra Ruth coming before you to present our special recognitions. Ms. Ruth?
Thank you, Dr. Davis, and good evening, board members. It is always an honor and a privilege to stand before you and highlight some of our best and brightest. And I appreciate the opportunity that you give us to do this. Tonight, we are going to touch on just about every aspect of Richland II, from our students all the way up to our superintendent. So we're going to get started with our students. Sorry, Dr. Davis. You can... Okay. We always like to start with our students. So we'll begin with Richland Northeast High School's Anna Lisa Walter. Unfortunately, Ms. Walter couldn't join us. We found out this afternoon that she wasn't going to be able to make it. But her premier principal, Dr. Sabrina Suber, is here and is going to come up and accept it. And, Ms. Dr. Holmes, you're going to help us give out awards tonight. And I think we have them lined up there for you. Anna Lisa is the national first-place winner in the Economic Advice to the President competition, which is run by the National Council for Economic Education. And I have to share with you what her advice to the president was. I think it was awesome. She said that in order to rein in what economists label "an overheating economy", she would recommend to the president to raise taxes. She said that an increase in taxes would reduce disposable income for consumers, thus decreasing consumption and shifting the demand curve leftward and closing the expansionary gap. I think she has an economist in her future. She was presented the award by State Treasurer Curtis Loftus, who was on hand already last month to recognize Anna Lisa and a few of the other winners from Richland Northeast. Dr. Suber, will you please pass on our congratulations? Let's congratulate her. Now I'm going to ask Zach Ward to join Dr. Suber up front. Zach is an 11th grade cello player from the Palmetto Center for the Arts at RNE. And he is the South Carolina Philharmonic Solo Competition winner. All of the contestants were given a list of suggested pieces to play. But Zach took a chance and opted for a much more difficult piece, and it paid off. He scored higher than all the other 15 and 18-year-olds he competed with. And now he is invited to perform the Sestakovich Cello Concerto, number one, in E-flat major, with the Philharmonic Youth Orchestra in April. He plans to pursue a career in music and is looking at music schools for college. We are very proud of you and congratulations. Now I'd ask Principal Matt Sherman from Blythewood High School to come forward. His student, Adrienne Ludick, from Blythewood High School, could not be here tonight, but Mr. Sherman is going to accept on her behalf. You may have seen her in the news. On the first time ever taking the SAT... ACT, excuse me, Adrienne scored a perfect score. And she says she went in blind with little preparation. So she was in shock and very happy when the results came in. But from what I hear, she has a strong academic record. So I don't think the school was shocked at her.
She looked bigger than mine, but she had homework.
Yeah, it says here she's taking four AP classes. So I'm guessing that's what she's doing tonight. Now we have quite a few achievements for Ridge U High School. Not the state basketball team. They're coming a little later. But I'll ask Brenda McFoxworth to come up front and just stay up here for a while for me. Because first, we're going to recognize you. Dr. Max Foxworth... Max Foxworth has earned top honors for her support of the military. She is the recipient of the 2019 Secretary of Defense Employer Support Freedom Award for South Carolina, which is the highest recognition given by the US government to employers for their outstanding support of employees serving in the Guard and Reserve. She was nominated by her social studies teacher, Edwin Griffin, who was Lieutenant Colonel in the Army Reserve. And I have to share what he wrote. "On many occasions, Dr. Max Foxworth has given me extended time off to meet my military duties, to include a year-long deployment in Iraq in 2006, 2007. She is constantly checking on me to ensure that I'm able to balance my responsibilities as a social studies teacher and US Army commander. He says the school sent monthly care packages to him while he was in Iraq and remained in close communication with his family. Dr. Max, good luck in the national contest. You're already our top winner. We're going to ask your track coach, girls' track coach, Coach Warren Yur, to come up front. Coach has been named the 2019 National Federation of High Schools South Carolina Coach of the Year. If you remember, less than a year ago, he was named the Coach of the Year by two state... Different statewide organizations. That's after his girls' track and field team brought home the state four-a title. The team was undefeated last year, and they have averaged a third-place finish in most state meets over the last four years. Congratulations, and I hope we see you back here towards the end of the school year. One more. Let's bring up your band director. Yes? Dustin King. Mr. King was awarded the South Carolina Music Educators Outstanding Young Music Educator Award. This award is given to an outstanding music educator who excels in growing young musicians. In the nomination letters, he was described as a teacher who truly cares not only about his students as band members, but also about their individual development as adult citizens and their roles as leaders in the next generation. He is a lifelong learner, and he expects his students to do the same. A parent said, "We continue to remain extremely impressed with the level of performance Mr. King is able to generate from his students. He is a talented individual, remarkable artist, and a phenomenal teacher." I think those words say it all. We have premier bus drivers in the district, and I have three of them I'd like to come up front. Emace Andrews, Dottie Wilson, and Marie Leonard. And their supervisors, the Director of Transportation, Wayne Norton. Marcus Anderson is our Transportation Coordinator Supervisor for Richland Northeast, along with Dale Schofield. Dottie Wilson, who has won multiple times, and Marie Leonard, won first place in the Special Needs Division. Mr. Andrews won first place in the regular education bus in what's called the rodeo competition. It consists of a written exam, road skills course, pre-trip inspection, and emergency evacuation drill. And the special needs drivers have to demonstrate loading and unloading a wheelchair. Now, I bet maybe one of the things was backing up a bus. And I can barely back up my tiny little car. So if you can back up a bus, you should win any award there ever is. Congratulations, and thank you for what you do to make sure our students get to school safely every day. We are very proud of you. Now let's go to the district office and ask Dr. Natasha Morgan to please come forward, along with Nancy Gregory for Teaching and Learning, her chief officer. We are very proud of Dr. Morgan. She has been elected as President-elect of the Palmetto State School Counselor Association. She has served the organization for more than 15 years and recently became involved in leadership as the Midlands Regional Representative. She works hard in Richland II as well, serving on several statewide committees, all to advance the very important profession of school counseling. Congratulations, and thank you for your leadership in this important organization. Okay, now, Dr. Davis, do you mind coming up front? Please. Just a few weeks ago in February, Dr. Davis had a doubleheader for awards. First, the Columbia Chamber honored him with the Kathy Novinger Trailblazer Award at the Fifth Annual Columbia Impact Awards. This award honors an individual who has shown exemplary leadership in his or her industry, advocates for business, and positively impacts our community. Same week, his alma mater, Francis Marion University, recognized him at its annual Alumni Awards Gala. Dr. Davis won the Professional Industry Award in Education and Arts. He graduated from Francis Marion in 1995 with a bachelor's degree in sociology. Now, Dr. Davis and I share a passion for the book called The Alchemist. And I think one of the reasons why he won both of these awards is because of something that I see in him in The Alchemist. It's about a story of a young man who... And his story talks about pursuing one's personal legend and how the universe conspires in helping us all achieve our personal legend. For Dr. Davis, his personal legend isn't about receiving awards. His personal legend is about helping our students, our children, a most important resource, in achieving their personal legends. He lives each day asking himself, "What can I do to help others to find their passions and to use their passions to fulfill their promise?" Thank you, Dr. Davis, for conspiring with all of us to make a difference for our students. And that concludes our special recognitions for tonight. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruth. We talk about... Well, I talk about the end user of the product that we deliver in the district being students. But there are like a whole lot of people and a whole lot of moving parts that make that happen. The obvious person is the teachers, but we have school counselors, principals, administrators, and a whole lot of folks that help educate the whole child, academically, athletically, and right up to our superintendent. And we just appreciate all the people who make it work and provide an opportunity for our students to succeed in however... In whatever vein that they are most successful. So we just appreciate all the moving parts that make this work. At this time, we'll move on to item six on our agenda, the approval of our consent agenda. We could get a motion at this time?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will call for the question at this time. And by a vote of seven to zero that motion unanimously carries. Moving on to item seven in our agenda, school focus, specifically Longleaf Middle. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board. We have presenting to you this afternoon Longleaf Middle School students and staff, which will showcase the esteemed learning at their school. We have Mr. Robert Jackson, Principal of Longleaf Middle. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you so much, Dr. Davis. Madam Chairperson, members of the school board, our district office team, our community members and friends. It is a delight tonight to stand before you to allow our students to showcase some of the learning that's happening at Longleaf Middle School. So that I don't omit anyone, I'm going to ask the entire contingency from Longleaf Middle School to stand and be recognized, just so I don't miss anybody out. One of the things that we try to focus on at Longleaf is to try to engage students in an authentic, steam-based curriculum that's designed for them to solve real-world problems in an authentic context. So tonight, we have some of our students that are going to come forward and talk a little bit about a simple machines project. So that when students are engaged in case studies or projects, the type of outcomes helps them to perfect their learning and get improved learning outcomes. Before we bring them forward, because I want them to do the majority of the talking, I do want to bring forward a video clip very, very quickly that will showcase just a glimpse, if you will, inside of our learning community. Let's take about 60 seconds to dig into this piece.
Good job, good job, good job, good job. Students have the opportunity to really get hands-on with their learning.
I never get tired of seeing that light bulb and having students having those aha moments. So it's been a fun learning experience for me to look and to search for those things that kids can make connections.
This is one thing I'm very passionate about. And so is the school. And the teachers are very nice.
The teachers... Oh, gosh, I can't even say enough about the teachers. The teachers, just from everything that she's been through from sixth grade up until now, they are still an active part of her life.
Those teachers gave everything they have to my child, and they knew they did to every child they worked with.
I looked up schools about animals, and I found Longleaf, and it had a Zubot magnet program.
This school is the best school I've ever been to because we have all the nicest things you can possibly have in this school.
Longleaf is your choice.
Hi, my...
It's on.
Hi, my name is Aiden. And tonight, I'm going to be telling you about how Longleaf Zubot students learn about simple machines. So first, we started off taking notes. And so we learned the definitions first, of course. So the definitions of simple machines is tools that we use to help relieve force or effort. So our first stage of learning about simple machines, we went around the school, and we took pictures of simple machines, such as screws, levers, inclined planes, pulleys, anything that we could find. And then we put it on the slide, and we looked over the slide. And then our second stage is that we went outside to our teacher, Mr. Griner's car. And we fixed his flat tire by raising the car with a jack and using a wrench to unscrew and screw the nuts back in and out. And so next, we went to the zoo, and we had a little scavenger hunt to find all the simple machines that the animals use so we can learn more about how they use them. So a log, the animals like use the log as an incline plane to go up and down to entertain themselves and get to new areas. And then we had another mini scavenger hunt. And within this scavenger hunt, where we found a little simple machine, such as a lever. So there's a train station at the Riverbanks Zoo, and the big lever that comes down to stop the train is a simple machine. And my greatest experience in learning about this and why I like learning about the simple machines is that we use so many of them in our daily lives, and we don't even know it.
Hi, my name is Amira. I am in sixth grade, and I attend Longleaf Middle School. In Ms. Agostin's science class, we start our simple machines unit. Did you know that a wheelbarrow and a seesaw are simple machines? After taking notes, it was time for our first activity. For our first activity, we had to design a playground with all six types of simple machines. After that, we took it to the next level, and we had to build a roller coaster with all six types of simple machines. That was easier said than done. My favorite part about doing the simple machines unit were labs. Thanks for listening. I brought my playground for everyone to see.
You see, the work that we are embarking upon will allow us to be able to make something pretty clear, that when students are deeply engaged in hands-on learning, when they are challenging their perspectives through inquiry-based projects, when they are forced to solve real-world problems in an authentic context, what happens is they discover their own learning outcomes. The more they discover their learning outcomes, the better they're going to perform. The better they perform, the more we become premier. We are not where we want to be, but we're certainly not where we used to be. So I want to leave you guys with this simple quote that drives our work each and every day. Don't let what you can't do stop you from doing what you can do. And this is from the late, great John Wooden. Dr. Davis, thank you so much for allowing us to come forward tonight. It has truly been an honor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Well, you've got any questions or comments from board members? We appreciate your presentation. And thank you, students, for the lesson in simple machines tonight. You educated us, and you made it entertaining and insightful and gay. We appreciate that. Thank y'all for coming here tonight. Next on our agenda... And pardon me, I can't see my screens without the glasses, but I can't see you with them. Next on our agenda is item eight, specifically 8.1, public participation.
entered upon the duties of board member. If the oath of office was administered to Ms. Holmes on that date, this applies to her too. I assert that the administration of the oath of office to them was in violation of state law. South Carolina Code of Law's Section 813-1110A reads in part, "No public official may take the oath of office or enter upon his official responsibilities unless he has filed a statement of economic interest in accordance with the provision of this chapter with the appropriate supervisory office. Violating this section is a misdemeanor under 813-1520." As of November 13th, the date when they were sworn in, Mrs. Mackey had not filed a statement of economic interest with the South Carolina Ethics Commission. She did not do so until December the 4th. Ms. Holmes also filed her first statement of economic interest on December the 4th. Thus, having not filed the required statement, neither was eligible to take office. The proper action is for Mrs. Mackey and Ms. Holmes to stand up now and step away from the board immediately. Ms. Mackey is not legally a board member and cannot be the chair of this board. When the chair's position is vacant, the vice chair assumes the duties of the chair. If she does not immediately leave the board, then all of you become complicit in the illegal functioning of this board. Should they be administered the oath of office at some future date, then they can become board members because they were duly elected. Mrs. Mackey cannot reclaim the position of chair unless she would be elected to it at a future regular election of officers. As both were not legally board members, I requested the district to cover all funds improperly paid to them and review all decisions made by the board. If deciding votes about student suspension, expulsion, and transfer, I request a new vote on those matters.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Thank you, Mr. Philpott, for your comments. Next, we have Mr. Chris Haas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as you know, recently, the House voted 113 to four to pass Bill H. 3759, which is being touted as a big moment in South Carolina education history. The Senate now has this bill in the form of S. 419, in which they have vowed to take time to work section by section and make it right, the same promises made by the House. The Senate's now hosting public hearings around the state, not in Columbia, unfortunately, but many far-off places, far away from interstates that are three-hour round trip drives for those of us here in Columbia, which is unfortunate, but many teachers are turning out to speak. They're in Georgetown, McCormick, Gaffney, and other places where we've seen former State Board of Education chairmen, superintendents from all around the state, deans of education, teachers, retirees, and members of the community come out to speak specifically to the bill and the things that need to be changed. Some things that I personally and many of us in the classroom would love to see change is a reduction in class sizes to allow for responsive teaching and authentic assessment practices to guide our instruction. Unfortunately, today, the Ways and Means Committee tabled any notion of discussion around the idea of reduced class sizes, which is unfortunate. The idea of adding base student costs back into the bill, allowing schools a choice between having a literacy coach and an interventionist, fully funding summer reading programs for students in kindergarten, first, second, and third grades, if we truly want to make a difference in helping kids learn to, to, to read, remove any language that allows for a takeover of struggling schools by charter companies. So the State Department of Education recently indicated that we are underfunding high-poverty districts by as much as $4,000 per student, and that's tragic. That should be our state of emergency that we're declaring right there. Other organizations have come out with studies saying that districts are typically receiving $2,600 per pupil less than is necessary to achieve even average academic outcomes. In poor districts, this is as much as more than $7,000 per pupil. So instead of providing funding for these schools, the state passes more and more mandates and further complicates our system with additional layers of bureaucracy, more non-educator leadership who make key recommendations and oftentimes make very important determinations on what happens in our classrooms. We would love to see true reductions in testing. We'd like to reevaluate ESE guidelines and establish measures to show growth across all aspects of the profile of an ESE graduate. We'd like to develop more robust assessments designed to celebrate what kids know and what they can already do, so that we can teach from their strengths, and we can teach from their interests, so that we can figure out collectively what they need and individually what they need, so that they can be successful in the classroom, and so that we can break this culture of testing that now permeates so much of what we do. So last night, one of our legislators, and I'm not going to name her by name or by party because neither of those are important, but she said, sometimes we have to take the good with the bad, and I don't really believe we do need to take the good with the bad. I think we should only take the good, and we should leave the bad behind. So I'm going to disperse tonight sheets of paper that shows all the members of the Senate Education Committee and all the members of the House Ways, or, sorry, the Senate Ways and Means.
Mr. Haas, we're going to have to stop you. We're asked to stop you there.
Great. In hopes that everyone here can contact them and let them know what's important to you for this bill as well.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Haas. Next, we have Ms. Lisa Ellis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The General Assembly and the Governor of South Carolina has proclaimed the 2019 legislative session as the Year of Education. To that end, a slew of bills claiming to improve education have been filed, including one of the biggest reform bills in 40 years, H. 3759 and its companion, S. 419. In a similar spirit, Richland Two has declared the intention of being South Carolina's premier district. This is understandable, since our district has a reputation as being highly competitive in many ways, such as offering a higher teacher starting salary than some nearby districts in order to attract the best teachers, passing a recent bond referendum to maintain and improve our already impressive facilities, and building a robust conference center. In many ways, we certainly are premier. However, premier also means leading, and I have not seen Richland Two stepping up in this arena. The Lexington One School Board approved a resolution supporting teachers in their advocacy, specifically in their efforts to increase the South Carolina average teacher salary to a nationally competitive level that encourages those with experience to stay in the classroom and makes teaching an appealing career option for college students and career changers. Similarly, Greenville County School Board approved a resolution on their concerns over the current education bills. The Lancaster Superintendent publicly spoke up last week about advocating. The superintendents of Abbeville, McCormick, and Greenwood, as well as several board members, spoke at the Senate hearing in McCormick last week. The superintendent of Spornburg Five bought red shirts for all of his teachers to demonstrate support of their advocacy. Dorchester Two expects their teachers to advocate for public education and gives them time to do so. Where is Richland Two in this? SC4ED has asked repeatedly for public support for Richland Two teachers advocating, and we still hear from some Richland Two teachers who are not comfortable advocating for themselves and students because they fear reprimand. And I would like to see district office members, the superintendent, and the school board speaking publicly on the current issues in South Carolina. This is not politics, this is advocacy. So why should you? There are elected officials who are working to take more funds away from public education. For example, the House bill places the burden on paying for Read to Succeed courses on school districts. If high school graduates have to take remediation courses in college, the school district has to pay for them. The current version of H. 3759 would cost a minimum of $31 million in general fund expenditures in an undefined amount at the local level. Another bill, H. 3681, creates education savings accounts, which will not only take money away from public schools, but also give 4% of the money in each account to a private financial institution for managing the accounts. These are just a few of the bills that do not work in the students' best interest. It is now time for Richland Two to join the conversation publicly and advocate for its own students, teachers, and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're trying to adhere to the three-minute limit, but if there's ever, if you don't get through your comments or didn't get everything you wanted stated, feel free to share those with, share those with us in writing. Thank you for your comments. Moving on to item nine, specifically nine point one, Legislative Update. Mr. Shad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just by way of update, as has already been stated by Dr. Haas and Ms. Ellis, the House bill as amended was passed 113 to four last week. The Senate version, S. 419, is up for discussion now. They are having sort of a listening tour across the state, I believe in Gaffney on the 18th, on the 21st, and down in Georgetown. And we are going to advocate as a school boards association on tomorrow down at the State House. I believe over 100 board members are preparing to talk to their members. My understanding is that on a variety of matters, including the budget, which the House has already taken up as well. So there is advocacy there on behalf of the school board. Sometimes conversations are not necessarily public in terms of talking to the delegation, but they are still effective, sometimes more effective. And so I know, at least from this board's perspective, that has been happening, and will continue to do that, and encourage our other fellow board members across the state to do the same. But we appreciate the passion of everyone involved as we talk about the Year of Education and what that means. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Are there any questions or comments regarding our legislative update? Hearing none, we will move on to, and I just want to reiterate that we, yeah, that the conversations that we're having are ongoing, are ongoing. Moving on to item, item 10, voting on executive session items, starting with item 10 point one, student appeals. If we could get a motion at this time?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I make a recommendation that student number one, we deny the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. It's been motioned and properly seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. By a vote of four to three, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, student number two, I make the recommendation for Blythewood Academy for the remainder of the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none, we will call for the question. Oh, it was, the motion was by Mr. Manning, seconded by Mrs. Agostini, I believe. Okay, you got it. Okay. Do you want us to vote again? Okay. By a vote of four to three, the motion carries. At this time, we'll receive a motion regarding student admission requests into the district's adult education program.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the admission request into the adult, the district's adult education program for students number one and two.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. Oh, it was, the motion was by Mr. Manning, seconded by Mrs. Agostini, I believe. Okay, you got it. Okay. Do you want us to vote again? Okay. By a vote of four to three, the motion carries. At this time, we'll receive a motion regarding student admission requests into the district's adult education program.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the admission request into the adult, the district's adult education program for students number one and two.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second? Was that Dr. Holmes? Okay, thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question at this time. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the diploma request for student number one.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the diploma request for student number one.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. By a vote, is that accurate? Yes. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the diploma request for student number one.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. By a vote, is that accurate? Yes. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the diploma request for student number one.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. Thank you, board members. At this time, we have reached a point in our board meeting where we're entertained. Old business action requested. It's the second reading of these policies, so if you want whoever makes the motion to make a motion approving or accepting several or all of the policies, if you want to pull anything out for discussion, or you can approve, make a motion to accept all the policies if that is your motion, and during the time of discussion, you can discuss any that you have concerns with, but that is at the pleasure of the maker of the motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I make a motion that we approve policies FA, FB, FEE, and FF, as recommended by the district.
I'm sorry, that should, I should have acknowledged Dr. Davis. I did not, but that's fine. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion at this time regarding any of the policies mentioned? I'm sorry. Hearing none, we'll call for the question. And that was your job to describe those. I'm sorry, Dr. Davis. Does the motion look accurate on screen, Mr. Manning, as you presented?
Absolutely.
By a vote of six to one, the motion carries. We have now arrived
Yeah, it was seconded by Ms. Agostini.
By a vote of three to four, the motion fails. Is there an alternative motion at this time?
Madam Chair.
Ms., Dr. Elkins Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion that the student attends Blythewood Academy for the remainder of the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none, we will call for the question. By a vote of four to three, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, student number two, I make the recommendation for Blythewood Academy for the remainder of the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question at this time. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, student number three, I make the recommendation to deny the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. It's been motioned and properly seconded, and we'll wait for the motion to pop up on screen before we call for the question. Oh, it was, the motion was by Mr. Manning, seconded by Mrs. Agostini, I believe. Want us to vote again? By a vote of four to three, the motion carries. At this time, we'll receive a motion regarding student admission requests into the district's adult education program.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the admission request into the district's adult education program for students number one and two.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Dr. Holmes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question at this time. By a vote, is that accurate? Yes, by a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the diploma request for student number one.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none, we will call for the question. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. Thank you, board members. At this time, we have reached a point in our board meeting where we're entertained. Old Business Action requested. It's the second reading of these policies, so if you want whoever makes the motion to make a motion approving or accepting several or all of the policies, if you want to pull anything out for discussion, or you can approve, make a motion to accept all the policies, if that is your motion, and during the time of discussion, you can discuss any that you have concerns with, but that is at the pleasure of the maker of the motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning?
I make a motion that we approve policies FA, FB, FEE, and FF, as recommended by the district.
I'm sorry, I should have acknowledged, Dr. Davis, I did not, but that's fine. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion at this time regarding any of the policies mentioned? I'm sorry. Hearing none, we'll call for the question. And that was your job to describe those. I'm sorry, Dr. Davis. Does the motion look accurate on screen, Mr. Manning, as you presented? By a vote of six to one, the motion carries. We have now arrived at item 12, New Business, No Action Requested. Dr. Davis?
Madam Chair, members of the board, we have before you Mr. Will Anderson. He's bringing before you new policy proposals. These are all new policies, so this is the first reading. We will discuss or share information with you regarding the policy revisions to ADF Wellness. We will follow that with revisions to EFE, Competitive Food Sales/Vending Machines, and we're bringing back before you a revised addition to the policy EEAG. If you remember, we had some discussions around student transportation in private vehicles. Again, that policy, EEAG, is again for first reading. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Thank you, members of the board. Policy ADF basically just changes a couple of grammatic, changes from the United States Department of Agricultural Dietary Guidelines to Smart Snacks in Schools compliant. And then the last bullet item talks about how we will report updates to this policy to the board yearly, and then we will do a triennial assessment and report those findings and resulting changes as well. That are all, that's all the changes to our policy on school wellness. This policy was initially approved on March of 2017. Any questions on this policy?
Ms. Agostini?
This is a question comment. The bullet that says schools will not deny a student participation in recess or other physical activities as a form of discipline. That's not new, correct? That is something that's been in our policy?
Correct.
Because I do believe that is something that is happening at some of our schools. So I would like to make sure that our principals are aware that that is part of our policy.
That is correct, Ms. Agostini. That is a part of our policy and has been a part of the policy for some time. We will make sure that this is communicated to our principals on tomorrow after, well, the Wednesday following the board meeting of approved policies. We revisit the policies with all of our key leaders to share with them any additions or changes, updates, so we will do that, and also ask that they communicate that to their staffs at each individual's elementary school and middle school where recess is offered.
Additional questions or comments from board members? Dr. Holmes?
Yes, the policy ADF is, that pertains to all food that is sold, correct? The Smart Snack Initiative, it's supposed to be for all food that is sold, correct?
That's all food that's sold or...
Like vending machines and et cetera like that?
Yes.
So there is one thing that I had a question about in the wording of the policy. It said, "all food sold," which is fine, "or served." I had a question with that word, "or served," because I was wondering if that pertained to like, if the culinary arts program had a program where they wanted to have snacks or a teacher wanted to have something in a classroom. I think that that would limit them, because if it says "sold" or "served," I think if, because the policy really just talks about items that are sold in like vending machines, the cafeteria, the canteen, those type of items. So I think the wording there with that "served" there is, it adds a different connotation to it, it adds an additional connotation to it.
Technically, per the USDA and federal guidelines, any, they define the term of the time of meal being 30 minutes before the first bell and 30 minutes after. Any time in between that time, all food that's served or sold has to meet, has to meet the federal guidelines. If not, there's a waiver for the fundraisers. This is also addressed in the policy EFE, and I failed to mention, this, the reason we're bringing this back is because when we went through our audit, the State Department of Education had to review this, and their only changes that they said we needed to make were to make that Smart Snack recommendation.
Okay, because the Smart Snack, I looked it up, the Smart Snack Code says only refers to food being sold by vendors, machines, and things of that nature. So that's why I was wondering, like, if the, my question still would be, if you have a student and they're having a bake sale or something like that, does that pertain to that, it's not going to be on the, that kind of food will not be on the safe snack list. It's not going, I looked it up, so that's why I was wondering, so that's why I was wondering about that particular word, would that hinder those activities from doing that? For example, if the culinary arts program was doing something, they want bake sale or things like that nature, because that would be within the timeframe of those school hours that you referred to that were also inclusive in that particular piece of legislation.
Correct. They would have to be, the principal would have to then make that a fundraiser, they have to go to the proper checklist from the State Department saying that's an approved fundraiser. They get 30 a year that can be with outside of the guidelines of the food.
But if it's not sold, I'm specifically speaking, if it's not...
It's correct. It doesn't matter if it's sold, free, served, that's, it is, this federal government back in 2010 did the Healthy Hunger Food Free Act, and that was President Obama's wife who initiated that, and what they wanted to do was start limiting the foods in cafeterias and totally during the day, to have more guidelines, dietary restrictions and guidelines that they were served to children. You all probably remember the first several years, there's a lot of pushback, so then they started bringing back in 2013 and 14, giving some restrictions. So it, per the guidelines, which is funding associated with that, so if during our audit, for example, they came and found that we were giving away food that did not meet the guidelines, we're in jeopardy of losing federal funding that comes from the U.S. Department of Agricultural. So that's why there's a thing in place that they can apply for fundraisers. So technically, 30 minutes before school, 30 minutes after, everything has to meet the guidelines unless they meet the 30-day fundraiser formula they put out.
So this would not apply to if a parent wanted to bring in snacks to a class, correct?
I'd have to go back and...
Because it's not being sold. That's my issue. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't putting ourselves against the wall with that served were in there.
Well, I'll be happy to ask the Department of Ed, since they reviewed this and said it was, it was good, so I'll ask them to make sure that if there's anything about that question.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Additional questions from board members? Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
All right. The next one is, kind of relates to Dr. Holmes's question that goes to competitive food sales and vending machines. It basically says what Dr. Holmes and I were just talking about, and about the, when food, what food can be served that does not meet the guidelines, and then those different competitive food sales. There's been some confusion about what that really means. It's not in competition of our food service provider, it's in food that's any, basically any food that's not in the cafeteria. So it could be, it really is for anything. So it's, it could be, we could do our own in-house food service company, and it's stuff that's not sold in the cafeteria. So it has nothing to do with, we're competing, there's a no-compete clause with Sedexo, it's not about that. It's all about making sure that the Healthy Hunger Free Act, the USDA Smart Snack Guidelines are served 30 minutes before and 30 minutes after meet those guidelines. And then this talks about how the vending machines have to have those smart snacks, and then it goes into more detail about the fundraiser, the ability to do the fundraisers, and that's in the administrative rule that accompanies it. Any questions? I have blabbered on there.
Okay. Questions or comments from board members? If not, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
All right, thank you. And the last one, we had some great, good questions and comments based on student transportation in private vehicles. We changed a lot of the wording and said basically, limited incidences, instances, and those instances have to be, through those three bullet items, written parental permission is obtained before this, that students can ride in a private vehicle. There has to be no less than two staff members in the vehicle so that one staff member is not with students alone, and that the driver is properly licensed and registered. And that this authorization is only granted for specific purposes, it's not a waiver for the entire year. And this only is for student activities. It doesn't mean pick up, it doesn't mean that me, Will Anderson, would pick up my kid after, several kids as, after an event and take them home. This is just for going to and from a specific event. Any questions?
Mr. Anderson, there were questions or concerns from board members last time, and we do get these, we get these policies beforehand, so we do have a chance to ask you questions. But this, does this language adequately address the concerns that board members had at the last meeting? Mr. Manning, yes? Okay.
Not me.
No? Okay, Mr. Shad?
Mr. Anderson, you said this is to and from events, so if it's from an event but to home, not going to the school, this has to apply. Is that right?
That's my, my understanding of it, yes, sir.
Okay, so the activity may have ended, because I want the public to understand this, the activity may have ended, and then that child needs to get home. If it's a coach that wants to take the child home, the coach has to have another staff member with him if this policy stands.
That's how, yes, sir.
That's how you're reading it, right?
Yes, sir. It has to have parental permission first.
Right, written parental permission if the parent says yes.
Have two adults in the car, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. This applies if this is an employee's vehicle, but what if the employee's vehicle is driven by that employee's child who's a properly licensed student? Does it still...
No, sir. It's just, it's just really trying to, the employee, not the...
So it affects the employees that's driving, not necessarily the private vehicle?
Not the private vehicle.
Because that's what it's saying.
Do you have a recommendation for alternate verbiage, Mr. Shad? Or just clarification?
I'd like him to explain that first, and then I may have one.
Okay.
We'll be happy to look more into this. Dr. Franklin and I both have been going back and forth with this and trying...
You good, Mr. Shad?
Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. Questions or comments on other board members? Dr. Davis?
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, and so that we can, as we bring this back the next time, if Mr. Shad would make a recommendation for consideration for administration to bring forward, if I'm hearing correctly, to clearly identify that this is any employee transporting a student, not putting emphasis on vehicle, but to put the emphasis on the employee regardless if it's his or her own private vehicle, a bar vehicle, or rented vehicle, it does not matter, it is the employee that should not transport the student without meeting these criteria of written parent permission, no less than two staffs, and being a licensed and insured driver with a registered vehicle in accordance to state laws. Is that correct, Mr. Shad?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Shad?
And Mr. Anderson, I was suggesting the second paragraph where it says in extremely limited instances, drop down to transportation of students in an employee's privately-owned vehicle driven by that employee, add that language, driven by that employee is essential. That would be my suggestion for the board's consideration, because that will cover the driver and, of course, the actual private vehicle.
I think that we could definitely make that recommend, take that recommendation and bring it back before the board added second reading. I think it was tried to, we tried to identify that in the second or the first sentence of the first paragraph. The board does not encourage employees to use their private vehicles to transport students unless it is essential, but I think that more clarification could be given to, doesn't encourage employees to transport students and not take the ownership off a vehicle and place it on the employee, and we can fix that language and bring it back to the board for second reading, if that's the will of the board.
I'll find that, board members. Any questions or comments from board members?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you, Mr. Shad. We have reached item 13, agenda items for next board meeting. If we could receive, I'm sorry, Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, you have in your board docs examples of the sample or the sample agenda for the March 26 board meeting, or the suggested agenda for the March 26 board meeting, where we will have our call of order, our new agenda items, we will have the executive session, student appeals, student admission requests in the district adult ed, contractual matter regarding a charter school. We'll also have our inspirational moment, the approval of the agenda, we'll do special recognitions, approval of our consent agenda, the minutes, and employment recommendations, releases, and in district transfers, our public participation, our legislative update. We'll also have for you on voting items from executive session, we'll have student appeals, the approval of a charter school renewal, as well as student admissions requests into the district's adult education program. Under Old Business Action Requested, the policies we brought before you this afternoon or this evening, we'll bring back before you for second reading and for your final approval to the revisions to ADF Wellness, EFE, and EEAG with the recommended, with the recommendations presented to us this evening. We'll also have local board approval of new courses under item 11.1, and then under New Business No Action Requested, we'll bring for you new policies for your review and input and comments, and that will be GBEB, Staff Conduct, GCK, Professional Staff Assignments and Transfers, GCOA, Evaluations of Instructional Staff, and GDJ, Support Staff Assignments and Transfers. In addition to that, we'll have three reports for you, a report on the capital improvement update, we'll have a report on achievement, as well as a rural recruitment initiative report. And then we'll review the agenda for April 9th, ask for the approval of that agenda, public participation too, board superintendent comments, public session, if a second public, executive session, should there be one, a second executive session, should there be one, and then adjournment.
I got ahead of myself, okay. Thank you, Dr. Davis. Is there a motion regarding item 14.1?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the agenda as recommended.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question at this time. Dr. Caution Parker, have you voted? Have you cast your vote? By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. Next on our agenda is item 15, the second opportunity for public participation, but all of those community members who have signed up were able to get their comments under the first opportunity, so we won't need a second opportunity for public participation. We will move right along to item 16, 16.1, Board and Superintendent Comments. Mr. Shad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to, I think she's already left, but I wanted to personally thank Pastor Patel for the inspirational moment. I echo all her sentiments in terms of the value of love in and throughout this district. Congratulations to those who received special recognitions from our students on up to Dr. Davis. I would just encourage him to try even harder. And also thank you to Mr. Jackson. I know he's already left, and his wonderful school and wonderful students and staff. This was an excellent presentation, very good, and not, not too bad for an alpha man. I want to make sure that's recorded. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Mrs. Agostini?
I wanted to congratulate everyone who was recognized this evening, and just to tell everyone, hopefully, we're going to finish up early and have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Would like to say congratulations to Blythewood High School, one of the teachers there, Ms. Wims?
Wims.
Wims. She was one of the finalists, one of the five finalists for Teacher of the Year, so congratulations to her and to Blythewood High School.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Dr. Caution Parker?
Everything's already been said. I want to thank you for a pleasant meeting this evening, and a short one. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Mr. Manning?
Hallelujah.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Dr. Holmes?
Okay, they're going to hate me, but I do have something to say. Okay, they're going to hate me, but I do have something to say.
Go right ahead.
Since my name was mentioned tonight. I want to make a point of clarity about something. When I was first elected to the school board, no one comes to you and tells you that you have to file a statement, an economic statement, by a certain amount of time or anything like that. I had no clue, had no clue at all. Then the Voice newspaper, they called me and they let me know. And as soon as they let me know, I went down to the place, well, I didn't go down to, I went and filed my statement of economic interest. In addition to that, I have already filed my 2019 statement of economic interest. One thing about being new on a board, these kind of things do happen because no one sits down and says, hey, this is A, B, C, D, E, F, and G that you need to do to a board. So I would, I will accept the responsibility of not having filed that, but I am in good standing with the State Department, as far as I know, at this current time. And I needed to say that, because unfortunately, I'm going to say something else too, that normally I'm going to, I'm usually the cheerleader and usually the most positive person around. But what bothers me is, is that I'm not going to be one of these board members that sits by idly and accepts when things are done for personal reasons, or things are done to be sensationalized. That's not who I am. Now, if I'm wrong, I will accept when I'm wrong, but I don't like being used for personal reasons of other people. And having said that, I would like to thank everybody that came tonight, the presentations were wonderful, and you all have a blessed and lovely evening.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Here are a few upcoming events that we want to make sure our community knows about. You can find more information on our website at richland2.org. Our Small and Minority Business Showcase is taking place on Wednesday, March 27th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Richland 2 Institute of Innovation Conference Center. Our Human Resource Department invites job seekers and all position, two and all positions career fair on April 4th from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. It is also held here at R2I2. And the district's 4K application process continues through the first week of April. I'd also like to share my comments, a big congratulations to Sue Wims, who was Richland School District 2's Teacher of the Year and an English teacher at Blythewood High School. This morning, I joined this State Superintendent of Education, Molly Spearman, and surprised Ms. Wims with the news that she's a finalist, one of five, as Dr. Elkins Johnson stated earlier, for the State of South Carolina Teacher of the Year. Ms. Wims possesses an innate ability to inspire student success. Her own experiences, including being a child of an educator, mother of four, and military spouse, shapes her approach in teaching philosophy. We are extremely proud of Ms. Wims, a premier teacher who does all she can to help our students pursue their pathways to success. In addition, in closing, I'd also like to recognize and thank Mr. Haas, Dr. Haas, I'm sorry, I had an opportunity to participate or observe the community's issues forum on yesterday evening. He did, along with our board chair, who served on that panel, the two of them, he did a phenomenal job of representing not only Richland School District 2, but the teachers in the state of South Carolina. He handled some very tough questions with authority, with clarity. As his superintendent, I said in the audience, I was very proud of his statements and his fortitude to represent the teacher profession in such a powerful way, he shows, has shown true leadership in his responsibility of being an advocate. Advocacy requires true leadership. It also requires courage. As we have stated in this district from the very start of this bill, when this bill was introduced, that our district would not take any type of position against our teachers having a voice. I have stated this publicly here in this forum, I have also stated it publicly at faculty advisory council, I've also stated it publicly at our key leaders meetings to our administrators, that we will not take any adversarial position against our teachers. As we are reviewing this, these changes to this bill and the recommendations to this bill, we have actively being, actively advocated for those portions of the bill that we feel are responsible to the teaching profession in a whole, and responsible to the teaching profession from this point to points in the future till we get a chance to address this again. This will be, hopefully, not a one-time issue, this is a long, a long battle. I do respect Mrs. Ellis's position and take that challenge very seriously. We will continue to find avenues and opportunities for us to work collaboratively with our teachers to address some issues. We have a meeting scheduled to address those things and have some sort of discussion. By opening a forum with SC for Ed, I've offered them an opportunity to meet with me on a monthly basis, to hear from them directly. And so whether or not, I hope that that position demonstrates our sincerity in making sure that our teachers have a voice. I've encouraged our teachers and our faculty advisory council to take their advocacy seriously. If they're not going to be a positive advocate for their school and have a voice, then they should ask someone else to serve in their place when we meet. That's an opportunity for them to share with me directly what the concerns are so that we can get those concerns addressed. And so those advocacy points and issues will continue to move us forward so that we can ensure that in the end, that we are providing the premier education for our students first, and then also make sure that we have the right employees in our district who are supported by our administration and also supported by our community, because we do realize that in order for our students to truly excel and to achieve, they must have a high-quality, highly-effective, highly-supported teacher in every classroom, and that is something that we're looking forward to, ensuring it happens.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Before I give my comments, Mr. Shad, I think has a postscript.
Thank you, thank you. I apologize, everyone. I did want to congratulate the Spring Valley Girls Basketball Team. They were able to go to the state championship two years in a row. Unfortunately, they came up short, but they still had a very successful season, and it was a successful game. And of course, congratulations to the Ridgeview Boys Basketball Team, who was able to defend their championship from last year, and so they're back-to-back champs. Thanks.
Well, I have that, if that's all you wanted to say, I was going, I'm teasing, I'm teasing. Yeah, thank you all, as I always say, for the people who have to be here with microphones in front of you and name tags typically, and for those who choose to be here. We appreciate the folks who come and make comments and express your opinions, whether we agree with them or not, it is your right to do so, and I respect that, and we appreciate you all for being here. One of the things, I'm just scratching off my list, everything that people have said, Read Across America, Read Across America, I think last Friday was just a blessing, and I want to thank the teachers and the schools that invite us out to read to your students. That's my favorite thing to do, is to share a book. There are lots of opportunities to do that, so I won't mention each school and each opportunity, but we thank y'all for allowing us to engage with students in a meaningful way. Just for me, I love that. With regard to the Education Reform Act, there's everything else, there's nothing else to be said. With regard to the Education Reform Act, I just want to make it known to everyone in this room that this bill hit the ground running, it came out of nowhere. We didn't have, wasn't, you know, something that was prefiled a year ago, it came out of nowhere, seemingly. But when it, when it was filed, it hit the ground running, and we had some work to do quickly, and our superintendent gave us a summary and Cliff Notes of that before we even, I think, even heard about it well. So for those of us who've been having conversations, I know with the legislative delegation, there are a lot of folks in the House, not as many in the Senate. Right now, it's in the Senate, and we are having conversations. The forum that was held last night, yes, there were people who represented Richland 2, and I appreciate that, but it made, it endeared my heart to see so many Richland 2 connections in the audience. There were staff members there, there were people who had kids in the district, people who have employees working in the district, and everyone who was concerned about this issue. So this is not something that's lost on us, it's something that we're paying attention to, and please continue to send your emails or phone calls, you know, we have our perspective and what we think, you know, the direction we think things should go, but if you ever have something else different to share with us, please do that. We appreciate your advocacy. This is not our school board, this is, this is a collective. So we appreciate the advocacy of everybody in the audience. And without further delay, I will at this time entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
So move is not a motion. If you could make a motion so we can have it.
If we adjourn the March 12, 2019 board meeting now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.